Morning Dave. Oh, they are.
They're enclosed enough to start working on that.
Well, yeah, they got that pretty much closed, yeah. So I was in the storage room. I finally got the photograph printed for people. So I was looking out the window and there's John and I'm knocking, knocking. He can't see me. There were three guys out there, they were all gone.
Did you remember that first?
Yeah.
Passed away.
Oh, that was the same dog.
Same dog. On Tuesday night, yesterday. It was like an old homie. I walked in there and it was like a place in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
Family has been speaking. None of them knew that we went back 50 years.
Yeah, sort of like us. Yeah, I didn't realize that was a significant person.
I can't remember. Actually, I was a teaching reporter, graduate from school. From here, because his dad said I would be told.
Yeah.
First started on the place to work. Well, yes.
Yeah, well, anytime I've gone to anything where it was a Casper College person, the attendance is fabulous from Casper College.
You've been in front forever for almost 50 years.
What happened?
My lawyer got sick, he collapsed, went to the hospital.
Well, in some ways, that's as good as it gets. I mean, it's a little tough on everybody else, but it's a lot better than being stuck in a nursing home or... Okay, thanks Dave. How are you this morning?
Good, thank you.
Good. How are you?
Good.
Good. Cherry Jones. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. I know you. We won't even say how long. Who are you?
Yes, it is.
So the entertainment.
Yeah, I was thinking of dropping a bit.
Yeah, it really does. Hello. Good, you? Cherry Jones. Yeah. See, I knew you when you were literally there. We just have a good time rounding out golfers.
That's okay.
That's where you learn that technique.
And I think I was well. Well, it is very fun. However, you figure hose we had, we had a budge and then we'd run with buckets. And I'm afraid a couple of dogs like that. They live for it. And I had this one, was working on a house that was up by a mountain. So I was up there waiting for a flock of them. And she was heading out. She got one. She left her control of this, so she got it off of her... About 12 feet in the air. No, I would refer to that. To you, thanks for coming. Not for you guys. I don't even... We look better than you. I mean, I'll take any one. Hi Terry. Good morning. Good morning. Mando brings some vouchers down here in a bit.
Okay.
See, he implies that he has something. And he just likes that. Terry. Jackie called this morning and she goes, you picked a really good seat to be on. She goes, you know, I'd rather be there.
Right, yeah, right.
I know. I know. I actually, I actually, so she was hanging, yeah, so she was waiting to get a hole in it. Well, so how was... For someone. It looked like you'd love to ask him a question. Oh, you're here.
I'm gonna sit down here. We got Luke's coming, he's worried for the deals. Stay down there. Yeah. If you want, I'll sit next to you if you want to sit down.
No, 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 no.
So, I'm honored that I'm...
Yeah.
But they'll be there.
Thank you so much.
I can sit?
Yes.
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 I'm ready.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're going to add this on to the agenda.
Okay.
I think, because I think he's... Are you ready?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I guess or not. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Albany County Commissioner meeting this morning. First on our agenda is our two public hearings. The first is the comprehensive plan amendment. CPA dash zero one dash one nine. So would anyone like to make a public comment on the comprehensive plan amendment? Can you hear me now?
No.
I'll talk louder then.
Sorry.
I hope I don't blow you guys up here. Okay, one more time. Does anyone want to make a public comment on the comprehensive plan amendment? Can you hear me now?
No.
I'll talk louder then. I hope I don't blow you guys up here. Okay, one more time. Does anyone want to make a public comment on the comprehensive plan amendment CPA dash zero one dash one nine?
Is that the change in zoning?
It's amendment to the comprehensive plan. It is not the zoning change.
Not this.
That's it.
That's it.
So it's a change from priority growth four to priority growth one as proposed?
This is the one you're here for. So yes, this is the one you're here for. Just cutting. So do you want to make comments?
No.
That's... Yeah, come up to the podium. Say your name.
Say my name.
Nothing wrong with being number one.
Thank you.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Liza Cosford-Mallett. I live at 512 East Custer Street in Laramie. May I make one comment first before I address that?
Certainly.
I had many, many friends that wanted to come and citizens. And I think this really highlights the point that we need to have these meetings in the evening. We can't do this. We don't get citizen input. Writing in doesn't do it. You need to see my face and have my input here. That's what we're all about. And I understand that there's issues with the statutes, but I think we can get around that. I don't think that's a real problem. The city does it, and I'm happy to say I go to a lot of their meetings and it's wonderful. So I really think this should be a priority. We need to make these meetings available for everybody, and we need to do it. Okay, number two. I feel like this is sort of a rush job on this. I feel like I've sort of, and I pay attention. I'm very concerned, not only about the aquifer, but about development in general. And I think that we need to... A lot more planning. And I think we really need to look at what the engineers and whatnot say about our west boundary in the aquifer and have a better thoughtful process. So that's basically it. So I do not think you should change the annex. Stone, do a study.
Thank you for your call. Thank you. Come on up.
I'm Denise Greller. I live at 2667 Jefferson Street. I too am very concerned about the rush to do the change of the comprehensive plan, especially since it's aimed at one specific change you're going to vote on later. And one of my concerns stems from the fact that you're basing your decision probably And one of my concerns stems from the fact that you're basing your decision probably on the recommendation of the P and Z, who it seems to me is not completely informed. And I'm basing that statement on the guest editorial that Mr. Miller wrote and was published in The Boomerang, which was not only a defamation of Bern Hinckley, a very noted and excellent hydrologist, but his facts were completely wrong. And if you take advice from the P and Z, who don't fully inform themselves of accurate information, then you're going down the wrong path and you're not representing us in the best way that you could. It also concerns me that you reappointed Mr. Miller with all his fallacies and that the P and Z is made up largely of developers, which means they have conflicts of interest. I think the P and Z needs to be expanded to have people who are not developers so that this can be more of a discussion and not a slam dunk. So I think you should consider that as you make these further changes.
Thank you very much.
My name is Donald Bellamy. I reside at 569 North Allen Street. The three main priorities laid out in the overall's plan, the comprehensive plan, is the health and safety and welfare of our citizens, minimizing the cost of essential services on our taxpayers, and the quality of life. By approving this plan the way that it is right now without conducting any further studies, we put all three of those overarching goals at risk. The health and safety, minimizing the cost, because if there is a problem, costs for taxpayers are going to skyrocket. And
Louder.
Sorry. And the quality of life is also going to be severely impacted if there turns out to be a problem. Now, I'm not so much against developing for consumer purposes. I'm not, you know, saying no businesses, no retail. The issues that revolve around the residents and potential developers are issues that need to be sorted out between them. But the issues surrounding the safety of our water is an issue that impacts all of us. And so that's why I'm against doing, changing this, using this process to amend the plan. And what I would like to see is I'd like to see a study conducted to see where the potential impacts are and then go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make a very brief statement.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Kathleen White. I was born in Laramie and have lived here most of my 70 years. I'm having trouble understanding your attitude regarding our aquifer. It is not your aquifer alone, and it shouldn't be up to you to decide what happens to it. It is my aquifer, too. It is my county, too. I do not want there to be even the remotest chance that it might be contaminated. I don't want to see anything built on it. Leave that entire area alone. Do you really want to go down in history, in our history, as the ones who allowed greedy developers to overcome good sense? I don't want to be Fort Collins. I suggest you move down there if that's what you want. We need new blood on all these boards that affect the future of our gem city. We need young people on these boards who are educated in smart growth and who desire the very best for all of us.
Thank you very much for your comments. Come on up, Chris. Come on up.
Chris Moody, 1014 South 9th Street, Laramie. Twenty-seven years ago, in 93, as a consultant with Western Water Consultants, I wrote the first aquifer protection document to the city of Laramie, dealing with wellhead protection of their city wellfields. Since that time, a lot of work has gone in to development of the Castor Aquifer Protection Plan for the city and the county. I was involved in technical review committee for the delineation. I've been involved in technical reviews of consultant reports, over 20 for site investigation reports. And over this 27-year period, what my hope in bringing technical information to the community about the Castor Aquifer was that the community, the city and the county that uses this resource, would have the information to make a conscious, deliberate, well-thought-out process for managing that resource and land use planning. And one of the greatest things that I think came out of that whole process with the city and the county were prohibited uses. It said, "We're not going to make a stupid decision about what we let get developed on the aquifer. We're going to take that stuff off the table and as a community, make a conscious decision how we do land use planning and not wish 20 or 30 or 40 years down the road that we didn't let that dry cleaner get developed on the aquifer or that gas station." And so that was huge in my mind. Now, the ordinances that the city and the county created, that created a process, was all good. And I just, I love this. This is the community saying, "You need to work this resource into your decision-making process." And land use planning is how it happens. And you are now considering a commercial use, which is, you know, not residential. And so what happens commercially, whether it's a gas station, whether it's office, you know, benign office buildings, I guess that's to be decided. But having these things in place where there was pretty good protection involved, and now the county is changing at this critical nexus of whether you're in the protection area or not for commercial use, community, think real hard about how you want that to happen with respect to changing zoning from residential to commercial. Very important. Good luck.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Egoff, 159 North Cedar. I just want to urge you all to not change the present zoning and comprehensive plan so that hazardous waste could be on top of our drinking water supply. You'll be the ones who will be congratulated in the future for having one of the safe water supplies. Forty percent of the world's water supplies are contaminated. Let's don't let ours be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Good morning. My name is Linderlin Lee. I live at 150 North Cedar, and I rise in opposition to this amendment. My grandfather was chair of this county commission from 1920 to 1926. My family has very deep roots in this county. And I had a grandmother who was very concerned about her great-grandchildren and her great-great-grandchildren's future in this area. I doubt think it's appropriate to consider changing the comprehensive plan without a compelling reason and very thoughtful and measured process allowing for comments from all of the public. I want to ask you what your change is for considering making this change at this time. Given the sensitivity of the site in respect to the aquifer, why should we abandon the county's long-term planning strategy? I mean, the gentleman who just spoke before me made it very clear that this is a process of over 27 years. I want to also reiterate some of the comments that have been made about how public hearings like this should, absolutely should be held at night. I know many people who are, no, I don't think it's a smiling matter. I'm sorry, but I know many people who are concerned about this, who are at their jobs right now, who don't have the ability to take time off and come here and talk to you. It's critical. We need a transparent process, and people need to have the opportunity to be able to speak to their elected officials. Commercial development at this location is not appropriate for many reasons. The foremost question is our water. You know, do we want to end up in a situation like Flint, Michigan? I don't think so. So I hope you will vote against this amendment and not go forward with even considering amending comprehensive plan at this time.
We thank you for your comments.
Hey, everyone. Yava Ludwig. I'm at 2252 Walsh Lane. And what those last three people said, I agree with those comments. I also want to say that 30 years ago, I worked on the staff of one of the Canon prophets that passed the first polluted pay bill in the country. And we did that because we believed that businesses don't have the right to compromise our environment for profit. And I have held that solidly for the last 30 years. I'm here representing that position. I also want to say that I spent my childhood following my dad around the Great Lakes. He was an ecologist, and we were studying the effects of polluted water on wildlife. And I saw some pretty horrific things as a kid, actually, with deformities in the Great Lakes, with populations dying off. So I hold very near and dear the possibility that when you poison the water, that's going to be a permanent, long-term damage to our communities, to our children, to our wildlife. And I don't think it's worth changing the zoning to allow a business to go ahead and do that over the top of this tremendous showing. When I went up here, I was the 45th person who couldn't get in the room. So there's a tremendous showing of your community here, asking you to please put our well-being first and put the well-being of the environment first above a single business's right to profit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Come on up.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope you had a restful time away. Ready for this morning. My name is Maureen. I live at the Coyote Street, Laramie County. I'm on the Pride Well, and I care a lot about how the city grows, how the county adds in commercial areas out in residential areas. I also am here opposed to the comprehensive plan change, and I think it flies in the face of what I think was a big community effort to create the comprehensive plan. And when I go in and look at the various maps, I didn't have the time to go back and look at all the records that are probably in place of what it took to put this in place and what people discussed. But it seems from the maps, rather obvious to me, that this area was intended to be carved out to keep it as is and to not allow additional growth with commercial properties. It's in the covenants of this property as one place that that intention is clear. And the second place is in both the county comprehensive plan maps and in the county zoning maps. And although you're here today to discuss changing, I believe, maps 3.10 and 3.5, I believe there's other maps as well. Can I pull your attention to map 3.12? I don't know if you have the comprehensive plan in front of you anywhere. It sort of shows the southeast of Laramie, Priority Growth Area 3 here. You can see this neighborhood clearly carved out in the future as not being PGA 1, where this area is shown as going PGA 1. This area is shown to be kept as is. And that correlates to Albany County zoning map on page 130, the southeast of Laramie area. If you were to look at that, you would see that this whole area falls in the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Zone, with the exception of the few commercial existing properties that are carved out from that green area. You know, there are those existing commercial properties, the nursery, the veterinary office, the upholstery shop, the mobile home park, Tombaui Gas Station, they're indicated in white, is already, you know, out of the NCOZ. Everything else there was intended to remain and not change, not developed. And when I think about the timing of things, if I understand it correctly, the county comprehensive plan went first, and then the city one followed. And the city one, with their map, seems to clearly, clearly carve out ever thinking of extending utilities into this area. You know, I imagine there was a rather clear discussion about the residents of this area not expecting city sewer and city water to come to them, in that there was a clear discussion that they didn't want that coming out their way. And in fact, your map seems to clearly show that the commercial areas are carved out from the NCOZ, but this parcel is in the NCOZ. So I feel as though, you know, when I think of Commissioner Richardson, and it's common for you to talk about not wanting to make decisions by fiat, and I just feel like everything in the history of the creation of these maps seems to indicate a real strong desire by this community, this neighborhood, the Laramie Plain subdivision, as well as the Sherman Hills area, to be left alone as is and not have commercial growth. And I don't know if there will be opportunity to speak at the zoning change, Madam Chair, or if the hearing is closed and you can't hear anymore about that. Because can I ask if you will be taking additional comments?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll stop there. And just again, I really do feel like this is a misguided change that this community area never wanted. And to say that you're going to make it PGA 1 because there's utilities nearby when the applicant has stated he has no intentions to hook up to those utilities. What's the point of being in PGA 1 if you're not going to make use of city urban utilities as opposed to, say, if this all goes through, a mobile home park could be put there? Can you imagine another mobile home park on a package treatment plant discharging right next to the Turner Well Field? I mean, I think there's a lot of ridiculous commercial things that you're opening yourself up to if you make this comprehensive plan change.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Terry Heber. I'm speaking. I'm Reverend Dr. Sally Palmer. I have a long history in Laramie. It was back in 1982. And I taught at the university, a course called Religion and Science, at least 10 times, with some of the top scientists at UW. The point was what we call intersection of understanding. So I want to speak from the perspective of ethics, of caring, as well as the science of things. And I will be brief. I presented a major paper in Denver and was called Water Flows Downhill. At this international conference, were people from Palestine, from Grand Rapids, from other places, because water has become the new gold. And all the people that spoke were worried about toxicity in the world's waters. They need to know how huge this problem is. The second thing that all these communities have found out, Terry, is that once the water is polluted, whether it's by fracking or by industrial waste, or with the leaky storage sites that we're still monitoring here in Laramie, still monitoring it, paying the tax dollars to see if gases are exuding into the land beneath us. But anyway, cleanup is not our forte anymore. And so I beg you, please to look, please to look at the cost of trying to repair something that you have a chance to prevent the damage in the first place. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Morning. Morning. I'm Michelle Visser, and because I was in the hallway, I'm not sure that I know all the rules about how to properly address you, so please forgive me. I live on Sully Street. I have these notes, but I think I just need to speak from the heart, and I am very emotional about this. I have a 16-year-old son who already sees his future being here in Laramie. He loves growing up here. And we may disagree about the appropriate land use, whether it should be open space or commercial, but I think the common ground we can all agree on is clean water. And we have so much evidence about how other decisions, short-sighted decisions around our country, have affected clean water for children in particular. Someone else already mentioned Flint, Michigan. I have a brief synopsis of my understanding of what happened in Flint, Michigan, on my notes. And I think we all know that short-sighted decision-making made that water intolerable permanently for those who were directly affected by taking in the toxic lead levels. Please don't make a short-sighted decision. We have so many gateways to our city that are already driven by commercial images of what Laramie is about. And the current exit, where we're talking about potentially rezoning, still maintains the character of Laramie being a community that loves open space, that loves its people and the aspects for which they chose to live here. And I just implore you to not rezone this area and let it remain the open space and the natural environment that represents what so many people in Laramie choose to live here for. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Nancy Sindelar. I'm a water protector, and I live on South 2nd Street. I want you to follow the money. Everything I learned about politics, follow the money. How much more tax funds are we going to amass by making this commercial property, by changing the zoning? And how much tax funds are we going to lose when all the people who live around that area can no longer drink their water and their property values tank? How much are we going to have to spend as a community to build a new water line? Because our water intake is no longer functional, and we either have to go south town or north town and either pipe it up toward the tanks are and the treatment plant and all that stuff is, or build a new treatment plant somewhere else. How much is that going to cost our community? How much is everybody's property, county, city, otherwise, going to be worth when we are bonded and taxed to the maps, our water bill's doubled, and we? How much is the county going to gain just by changing this zoning? Absolutely nothing. It's going to tank our whole county. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comments?
They're coming. They're still coming.
They're coming. Okay.
I just want to make a strong statement that I agree with everybody who's spoken. I hope that you will listen to them. They truly represent the community.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Selmer, 1462 Indian Hills Drive. I'm sorry that people in the back can't hear what's going on. Very unfortunate we can't hear the comments. But I would like to say that from what I have heard, I do agree with the excellent points that have been made, and I'd like to voice my opposition. I won't repeat any of the comments, but please take them into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to say something.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Marius Fadre. I'm at 1759 Inca Drive. I did send in my commentary yesterday, my email, that I hope you received. There are two points that I wanted to emphasize for this meeting. The first one concerns the proposed amendment. And the point I raised was that the Environmental Advisory
Excuse me, sir. Sorry. That light comes straight into my face, so could you do something different with it, please? Thank you. Please continue.
Yes. The Environmental Advisory Committee, based on the reports that I have received, is going to be close to making a proposal based on the latest information that we have, scientific information, on possibly changing the proposal to change the western boundary. I would think that it would be of interest to the commissioners to hold off any decision on an amendment until that proposal comes, which is supposed to be relatively soon. Therefore, you have a position that has more fully informed about the situation of the property that you wish to modify. The second point that I did not have in my communication of yesterday concerns the Planning and Zoning Commission, who are, of course, the first point of response to these situations. And I find that the attitudes and the actions that certain members of the Planning Commission have taken are very inappropriate. And I think that is, and it shows bias, I think, in terms of decision-making. And I think it's incumbent on the commissioners to review the situation and have commissioners in planning and zoning that are acting appropriately as representatives of the county and of the people of the county, as opposed to the actions that they're taking. I appreciate your recognition of that, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioner. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jessica Plack. I've lived in Laramie for 44 years and hope to live here for the rest of my life. And I'm just here today not as a scientist, not as anyone who knows the particulars about, you know, groundwater issues, is not an expert about wildlife or weather or any of that. I love history, right? And I love our community. And I would ask that all of you just vote in favor of protecting the water rights in our community. We all deserve, every single person in this group deserves the opportunity to have clean drinking water, clean water to use in their households, knowing that their children and future generations aren't going to be poisoned in any way. And so I would implore